I'd like to call the December 22nd meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. First, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience who is also recording this meeting. Seeing none, could we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
First item we have is public comment, and we have Ken Ethia, who wants to speak to the John Chaffee Blackstone River Valley, Florida.
Good evening. My name is Ken Ethia. I live at 404 Leicester Street, and I just wanted to come up tonight to congratulate the town that we are now a part of the John H. Chaffee Blackstone Heritage Corridor. I have a map here. It's probably too small for anybody to see, but it starts in Leicester, and it shows all the towns that were on the corridor, and it ends in Providence. And as I looked at it earlier tonight, it looks like if you went and bought a birthday cake, I guess, get it home and open the box, and somebody had already taken a piece out of it. The only spot that isn't filled in is Auburn, and I'm just so happy that as of Friday, we are a part of that corridor. I'm on the Board of Directors at Waters Farm in Sutton. It's a 128-acre not-for-profit farm, and Sutton is part of the corridor, so I've seen some of the things that the towns are eligible for, being part of this corridor. I've also gone to many of the walks in Worcester, where the ranger would bring you around the Blackstone Canal where it was and explain it. This will make us eligible for things like this. I think this will affect anybody from the children beginning school to the senior centers in town. There were just so many opportunities. Two years ago, I've gotten to know a lot of the rangers, so two years ago, I asked them if they would allow me to do a walk down Main Street, the 1839 Stoneville Mill Village, and they did, and a ranger accompanied me. And I don't know if it was because of publicity or what, there weren't many Auburn people, but we had a lot of people from Rhode Island and down that way. But hopefully, we'll be doing more things like this around the town with a ranger, and it's just a fantastic -- these rangers are so professional, and they also would come to a place and do a lecture on many different subjects. They had a woman named Valerie Paul, who would do the process of maple, making maple syrup and sugar from a tree, and I've seen her do that, I think, three times, and each time she would do it, I would enjoy it just as much as the last. She did it at the Black Tavern in Dudley. She did it at Antique Engine Tractor Club in Boilsden. Anyways, I'd seen her three times, and she's just so good at it. I know several people that have actually tapped trees and made maple syrup and sugar just from what they learned from her, and that's just one of the many things that they are able to do. I just, again, I just wanted to make everybody, not only the people here, but the people watching on TV, realize how lucky we are, and this is just a great, great thing. I just wanted everybody to know about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your efforts, Mr. Ethia, on pushing for this for many years. Next, um...
Madam Chair, I'd like to move up...
We have another public comment until now and then. We have Dan Largess, who wants to discuss land.
Danny Largess, 39 Perry Place, Precinct 4, Town Meeting member. I'd like to back up just a little bit to the meeting before Town Meeting. We discussed on us taking the stand on the gift. I did not make a motion during Town Meeting. I wanted to see which way it was going to go and let the Board decide on this. So that's why I did not make the motion, as we discussed before the Town Meeting. Over the last couple of weeks, I've talked to, no exaggeration, 200 people. I've heard the pros, I've heard the cons on this gift. Everybody I've talked to has their own opinion, and I have to say it was probably 80, 20 on the gift. 80 not in favor of it, 20 saying yes. A lot of people don't, they think there's ways around it if we use the gift, and I don't think they fully understand the process, that we can never, ever touch the land. So I'm here giving you feedback tonight, saying no. All the people I've talked to, 80, 20, saying, "Do not take the gift." You could put the Cub Scouts up there for an overnight on a weekend, you know? That would ruin that for them. Kids could go sliding up there. It's a nice hill. I did Google Earth on it. It's a nice hill for the kids to go sliding. I really think it could be used, even if it's left the way it is, just used for the kids of the town of Auburn. I just, I'm really not, I can't stress enough on the gift. And after talking to the clerk, I was questioning the letter I got in the mail, both my wife and myself, and Mr. Baker, because, for one, it was in Town envelope, and, but it was not on Town Stationery. So I was looking at that letter, and it just didn't make sense to me why. So after speaking to the clerk just now, she explained, I guess it was an email...
Okay. And that is an agenda item, so I'm sure that all that information...
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that. I was just wondering who had paid for all of that, if it was supposed to be done at Town Meeting.
Okay. It's not a Board of Selectmen item, so when we address it, I'm sure those questions will be answered.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no more public comments. I'll entertain a motion to move up...
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we move up. Item 8B.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? So the item is to request for the moderator and Town Clerk to attend Town, attend a meeting regarding a letter to Town Meeting members. If you want to join us up at the table here, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So for a little background, Mr. Simonian had emailed and asked us to be put on the agenda that, I don't want to summarize. I'm asking you to reach out to both Charlie Baker and Ellen Gabrie to have them present at the Board of Selectmen meeting on Monday, December 22nd, 2014. As elected officials, they involved themselves in the process of acceptance, non-acceptance of the anonymous $1 million donation by sending letters to Town Meeting members, asking them for an opinion on this matter. Since they have chosen to do this, they should be present to answer questions in regard to this letter. I received calls asking about the letter, and knowing nothing about this ahead of time, had no answer for our Town Meeting members. This letter has created a large amount of confusion, and the authors of it should be present to answer those questions. Please acknowledge receipt of this email. Mr. Simonian, did you want to say anything before we let them address it?
Yeah. Well, I'd like to start off by reading the response to the email that the Town Clerk just sent from Mr. Baker. Hi, since I am, as is Ellen, an elected official, I am not answerable to the Board of Selectmen and the performance of my duties. In fact, since Town Meeting has three necessary component parts, moderator, Town Clerk, and Town Meeting members, I am certainly not answerable to members of the Board of Selectmen concerning my actions and relationship with Town Meeting members. I am especially puzzled as to why Town Meeting members would contact Mr. Simonian concerning this letter. It is very straightforward, it is a very straightforward, understandable letter, and if Town Meeting members had questions about it, they were free to contact me. I have a landline, and I'm always available to answer questions. I will, of course, be available Monday evening. I ask that my appearance be scheduled at the beginning of the meeting. And I just want to say, I agree 100% with Mr. Baker. He doesn't answer to the Board of Selectmen, but at the same time, he doesn't represent us either, and some of the questions that I received were, one was what Mr. Largess alluded to, that it was not on Town Letterhead. Some people actually thought it was some kind of scam. Not knowing anything about this letter going out, I had no answers, and I told people they should call, call the Town Clerk's office if that, if they had questions, if that was the number on there. But I just wonder what motivated this, because I don't remember, I don't remember asking for any input from Town Meeting regarding this issue that is actually up to the Board of Selectmen. So I'm just curious where it came from and, you know, why someone felt it was necessary to give this kind of feedback to the Board of Selectmen.
Who wants to go first?
Yes. First of all, let me state that I have received no phone calls of any kind concerning this letter. Now, the letter I sent, this is follows. Dear Town Meeting member, it has long been the tradition on important matters for the moderator to call for a non-binding straw vote to give the selectmen a sense of what Town Meeting thinks. At the Town Meeting on purchasing the land, I didn't call for a straw vote, because I didn't think it was necessary. Since then, it has become clear that such a straw vote may well be helpful to the selectmen. Upon receipt of this letter, I would ask that you reply by email at egabrie@town.auburn.mass.us or by phone to the Town Clerk at 508-832-7701, and vote either yes, accept the gift, or no, don't accept the gift. The selectmen will be informed of the final straw vote. Thank you, Charlie Baker. I really don't understand how anybody, what, are they confused? Dear Town Meeting member, is that confusing? Or reporting to the Town Clerk? Well, who else would one report to? The Town Clerk, of course, is the keeper of the records. So I think it's pretty straightforward, and that's what caused Mr. Simonian's, I guess, response to somebody, not to me. He could have picked up the phone, too.
I didn't have a copy of the letter.
Didn't matter. You had received what you received supposedly.
I appreciate being allowed to finish my statement.
Yeah, right.
We're not going to go back and forth like this. Please wait till I recognize you before you speak.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Do you have something?
I didn't have a copy of the letter, so I had no idea. I just, the people who called me, and I'm not going to answer for anybody who called me. If you want to know why people called me, maybe you should reach out to them. It's not my job to answer for anyone who did contact me. All I can tell you is that there were questions. I didn't know anything about it. I told them I would contact whoever you were directed to contact, but I do answer to those people, because they elected me, and if they have a question, they're certainly welcome to call me on anything regarding the town. But I, you know, I've been in town for 12 years. I've been on this board for almost five. I was a Town Meeting member for two. I've never, I've never seen a straw poll, so I'm just curious, like, what motivated this? What motivated this whole? Because I, as a member of this board, I certainly didn't ask for any input. I think three, three meetings or four meetings that we had regarding the land, it was pretty clear to me where, how people felt about it. I'm just curious, where, what was the motivation? Who did you speak to in regard to deciding to do the straw poll that is supposedly a tradition, and yet I've never heard of one in the entire time I've been in town?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, if I may. Again, why didn't I do it that night? Well, I didn't do it that night, because the vote was such an overwhelming 98 to 2, and the Finance Committee had been in favor of doing it by borrowing and taking the gift, and I felt, it seemed to me, and I could have been wrong, that basically, the 98 people, most of them wanted to take the gift, an opinion. Then after the meeting, questions arose in town, so I thought, well, I hadn't done it, maybe I should do it. And why did I do it? Well, I'm reading now from the minutes of the special Town Meeting of November 12, 2009. The moderator asked for a sense of the desire of Town Meeting to name this area, to name this area. Victoria McGlaughlin made the following motion. I move that the members request that the Board of Selectmen begin the process to name the constructed fields in Packard Hog Meadows, the Dr. Arthur and Dr. Martha Pappas recreational complex, seconded by Scott Taylor. The vote on the motion was unanimous. Immediately following that vote, Nicholas Hammond, who was then on the Board of Selectmen, made a motion to reconvene the Board of Selectmen meeting from pre, the earlier that evening. This was seconded by Doreen Goodrich, the vote in favor to reconvene the meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Nicholas Hammond made a motion to name the Packard Hog Meadows area of the Dr. Arthur and Dr. Martha Pappas Recreation Complex. Doreen Goodrich seconded the roll call vote, 5 to nothing in favor. That was 2009. Thank you.
So that was a straw poll?
Yes, absolutely. It's been a long tradition.
Mr. Simonian.
But that still doesn't answer my question. You said yourself that it was overwhelming, because people voted to borrow the money overwhelmingly, and I'm just asking, what was the motivation to do it?
No, that's not what I said. I said, not only did they borrow the money, did they vote overwhelmingly to borrow the money, but I felt at the time, based on the recommendation of the Finance Committee, that probably at least 90 of those people, if asked in a straw vote at the time, would have said, yes, take the gift. An opinion, I wasn't sure. This is what I thought. This is why I did not immediately call for a straw vote. Then after the Board of Selectmen meeting, when it became clear that quite a bit of opinion in town divided on the question, I thought, well, I hadn't done it before, why don't I do it now? And as moderator, working with Ellen Gabrie, the Town Clerk, who was the keeper of the records, and who also knows who, the addresses of the members, you know, the Town Meeting members, and by the way, this letter went out to only those Town Meeting members who had been at Town Meeting. It did not go to a Town Meeting member who was not at Town Meeting. So it only went to the, well, I don't know whether there are any abstentions, let's say the 98 to 2, at least to the 100 people who were there, and that was it. And that's what I did, and that's what I decided to do, and I'm the moderator, and that's why I did it.
Mr. Simonian.
Isn't your job as the moderator to just moderate the meeting and not seek out opinions?
No.
And again, I would go back and say, I don't know if anyone else on this board solicited this kind of input. I'd like to know, because I certainly didn't. I don't, I don't know why...
Nobody did. I did.
And at the same time, who authorized, who authorized the use of Town resources to do this? Because I'll be honest with you. Just a few months ago, I asked the Town Manager for copies of some emails, and she quoted Mass General Autonomy, and it was very clear that, in the Mass General law, she stated that elected officials cannot use their position to gain any benefit that an average person would not be able to gain. So it seems to me that, based on this, any Town Meeting member, or possibly even any resident, could just walk into Town Hall and say, hey, I would like to get an opinion of Town Meeting. I want to use Town resources to send out some letters. I don't, I don't see how we can do that.
So I'd like to respond to Mr. Simonian's question about seeking an opinion. I did not ask moderator to conduct this poll, what I did ask, and which I was surprised at. At Town Meeting, I did ask, when I stood up, and asked for input from Town Meeting members. I was looking for their thoughts on the $1 million. And a few people got up and spoke, but not as many as I thought would have gotten up to speak. And if you've seen in our previous meetings, the Planning Board, Conservation, Zoning, and I believe most recently, not a formal vote, I believe, because they didn't have it on their agenda, but the Wind Turbine and Alternative Energy Committee took a position on the $1 million. So when I heard of this, I just assumed it was a continuum of elected boards, and Town Meeting is elected, to offer their views to the Board of Selectmen, which we still have, you know, with the exception of having Mr. Simonian ask you to be here tonight and tell me if I'm wrong, I would assume that you had intended on giving us the results at some point in the form of a letter or whatever.
Well, actually, I think Ellen has the results in there. Since we're both here, I'm sure she'll be doing that. But, you know, it seems to me that all, first of all, I don't have a dog in this fight. I'm not, I have no position. That letter doesn't take or even attempt to take a position. It's a straightforward question. I, in 24 years at Town Meeting as moderator, I have spoken twice. Once to ask Town Meeting not to make me the appointer of the entire School Building Committee, and the second time was when Mr. LaFlash wanted a skateboard for the teenagers in town. I spoke in favor of that. That's twice in 24 years. I don't give opinions. I may have them, but I don't give them. It seems to me, all I was looking for, as it became clear, there was a lot of discussion in town, as you mentioned, the Energy Commission and so forth, seeing and reading what I had. All I was looking for was information, and it seems to me, I thought, how could any Board of Selectmen be against information? So what we're giving you here tonight is information, and what you do with it is not, we're not, I'm not trying to say what you should do. What you do with that information is up to you. At least you'll have it, and it's now obviously on record.
Ellen, do you want to address the funding, the funding of the mailing? I mean, I assume it came out of your budget, but...
It did come out of my budget, and as a department head, I have discretionary powers to expend monies, and part of my job is to contact Town Meeting members. I have a lot of interaction at the request of Board of Selectmen, other elected boards, and the moderator, and it was minimal money, a few labels, an envelope, and some paper. I mean, it's less money than it costs me to have a constable post a special Town Meeting warrant, mail out notices to all Town Meeting members, and when you call a special election, that comes, I mean, a special Town Meeting, that comes out of my budget, and I have to accommodate in other areas, because I can't plan on special Town Meetings. So it's just kind of a juggling act that I do as a department head.
Mr. Simonian.
I understand that. So based on that, why, I don't, I don't understand why you would even spend, spend any money when you said there's so many unknowns, and at the same time, I don't, I was told as an elected official, I could not use Town Resources to gain something that any other person, that I would have to pay for it out of my own pocket. It seems that an opinion was solicited that nobody really asked for, and yet the people in the town are kind of on the hook for paying for it. I don't care if it's $10 or $100. Nobody asked them if they wanted to spend the money to do it.
I'm not nobody. I'm the Town Moderator. I ask for the opinion.
Mr. Baker, I don't know why you're trying to fence with me. I'm not here to insult you. I'm here to ask questions.
You've already done that.
Well, I could say the same, but I'm not going to be childish. I'm asking you questions that were asked of me. I think that the people who I, who I'm responsible to deserve answers to their questions. If you're, if you're going to take it upon yourself to send out the letter, you claim you didn't talk to anybody else, it was solely your idea, that's fine, but you took it upon yourself to involve yourself in the process, and people had questions, and you seem to not think that you have to answer to any of those people. So I don't know. But hey, you know, that's, that's up to you.
I could say I've asked and answered. It's been asked, I've answered it. I don't know what prevented you from telling anybody or anybody here on the board, being asked by anybody who calls them on this issue, to contact me.
I did.
Well, they didn't do it.
What do you want me to do?
I don't know.
Want me to go to that house individually?
But I know Dan Kapenter has contacted me often in his, in his various roles in town. Can people contact me? I'm really not hard to find.
The manager is going to address the using resources, individual selectmen using resources, or individual using resources.
Through the board. Just, just to be clear, the difference is, I don't want to speak for the Town Moderator or the Town Clerk, but in the case of asking for a public information request for emails or to go back on minutes, and we've had to call the AG's office and clarify this several times. It's happened several times. In addition to your request, Mr. Simonian, I've had it happen with other board members and called to find out if there's significant resources that go into a public information request. In that case, it was several hundred emails. If the public is not able to access it without paying for it, then a board member cannot do so as an individual board member. If the board takes a vote, and it becomes part of the business of the Board of Selectmen, and all of the board votes to do that, then we can do such a request, but an individual selectman cannot get something that a member of the general public cannot get. In that case, you, an individual selectman can get it, but there is a fee associated with it. My understanding on this, that the difference would be that this was done as an action of the Town Moderator. The Town Moderator does not need to have a consensus vote, because the Town Moderator is elected, and you are the moderator. So the difference would be, you are spending resources in the context of performing your job, just like the board would be if the board took a vote to ask for such resources. So I just want to be clear on it.
Mr. Simonian.
So there were, there were no conversations about this, right? And yet you came here prepared with that specific answer to that specific question? Sure. Okay.
Through the board, are you speaking to me?
I'm, I'm just saying, you know, it seems like there was a prepared, prepared statement to answer a question that...
Through the, through the chair, I didn't prepare any statement. I wasn't aware that Mr. Simonian was even going to raise that issue. I had no way to prepare for that. That's just the facts.
So I have one last question. If any Town Meeting member came up to your office and wanted, and said, hey, I would like to poll Town Meeting and find out what their thoughts are on this?
It's on the website. All of these names and addresses are on the website. It is available for no cost.
But they could, but they could use the resources of your office to send out letters and mail?
No.
No, they would, it's like acting like a member of the Board of Selectmen. You would have to get a vote of Town Meeting to authorize a Town Meeting member to...
So why is another elected official afforded that opportunity, yet not a Town Meeting member?
Because he's, he's a separate entity. He's not part of a board.
I would really appreciate it if you would not take the Lord's name in vain in front of me, Mr. Baker. That I find reprehensible.
Mr. Kapenter, did you have something?
Yeah, I just, to Steve's point, although I did not ask the moderator specifically, I have asked a lot of people. Probably been more of a nuisance than a help, but people do want to be asked their opinion. I appreciate the moderator and the Town Clerk taking the time. I had hoped that Town Meeting would have had a more robust conversation, but, you know, that's, that's, Town Meeting was comfortable with, with the action they took, so I appreciate you taking that, the time to do it. You know, I don't understand why we don't reach out to each other and communicate with each other. We're all on the same team. We can all communicate. As the moderator has mentioned, I've called him several times throughout the years, and he's always made himself available, and I know the Town Clerk always makes herself available as well. So if people have, have concerns or questions about things that they get in the mail, I would recommend that they call the Town Clerk's office as the first stop, and then I'm sure they'll get good direction from that point.
Mr. Simonian.
Yeah, I couldn't agree with you more, Mr. Kapener. So in the vein of communication, why is it so hard to say, hey, I'm going to send a letter out to the Town Meeting members, ask them for an opinion? You know, communication's a two-way street.
But I don't think the moderator is required to communicate. He did. He communicated with the Town Clerk.
Nobody's required to. It's, it's a cordial thing. Your point was, it would be great if we communicated more. That's the same point I'm making. Why, why do it without informing people, knowing that there's a chance someone might get a phone call? I had no idea what people were talking about when they called me. So, you know, in the interest of information, prepare people, hey, I sent out this letter, or I'm sending out this letter.
Well, my point is, the moderator did speak to the Town Clerk. He was communicating with the individual that he needed to communicate with.
But I could read that...
I'm just going to wait, ask people to wait to be recognized.
All right, I'm sorry.
I don't want this back and forth, back and forth.
I do apologize, Madam Chair, but anyways...
Are you finished? No, I mean, if you finish your statement, then I'll recognize Mr. Simonian.
You know, the moderator is an independent person. He does not have a board that he, that he answers to. Therefore, if he needs to reach out to Town Meeting members, he's, he's done it in the past. It's, this is not a new, new iteration. It might be some, a new spin on an old tradition, but it is something that has happened over time. So if someone calls me with a question that I don't know, I just, I would reach out to the moderator, I would try and get in touch with the manager, I would try and get them that answer. Not telling you or taking issue, I'm just concerned that if somebody called me, I would reach out to the moderator and say, did you send this? Because people are concerned that this could be a hoax, especially if it's not during business hours, and I wouldn't be able to get in touch with the Town Clerk. You know, the manager's always good about answering any of our, but I hesitate to bug her too much over the weekend, so she can have a little time, but...
I understand the point. I'm not, and I'm not disagreeing with you. I mean, if we're going to talk about communication, I could, I could read this letter, and where it mentions the Board of Selectmen twice, one of the other things that people ask... I'm not, and I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm not, I mean, if we're going to talk about communication, I could, I could read this letter, and where it mentions the Board of Selectmen twice, one of the other things that people asked, you know, why, why is the moderator representing the Board of Selectmen? And you could easily construe that from this letter, because we're mentioned in it twice. And again, whereas we didn't solicit the input, I think it could have been made more clear that he was acting on his own and not with anyone else, or had, had received input from the Board of Selectmen to do this in any way, shape, or form. We're, like I said, we're mentioned in here twice. It seems almost like he's acting on our behalf, and that also is misleading. So, I have no problem with communication, but again, communication's a two-way street. So, I'm done.
Mr. Simoni, could I see that letter, please? I just want to read through it again.
Yeah.
Is that the copy that was just handed to us?
No. There you go.
Thank you. Mr. Holstrom?
I would be, through the, the chair, I would be in complete support of anybody taking a straw poll. The moderator, he was at the meeting and would understand the pulse of the meeting, but a straw poll would definitely put a definite finger on it and say exactly what is going on. I think that the interpretation of the benefit is not a monetary or an opportunity benefit. It's a benefit, an asset for the Board of Selectmen to receive anything outside of our board, to receive information to help us make an intelligent decision. So, I would be behind the moderator in the straw poll 100 percent, regardless of whether I requested it or any member of the board requested it. He is still within his right, as an elected official, within his own right, not answerable to us and only answerable to the people that elected him.
So, I'll just, just say for the record that I received no calls on this letter. I wasn't, wasn't aware of it until Mr. Simoni sent the email asking it to become an agenda item. And the, again, I'll just reiterate, the only input that I asked was at town meeting. If, if the moderator chose to do a follow-up straw poll, I did at town meeting ask for, for a sense of town meeting. But I would like to ask, Mrs. Gabriel, did you have many calls or concerns about the letter?
The only calls that I received were either yes or no votes from town meeting members. And I can give you numbers as of today. I had 38 people said yes, take the gift. 30 people said no, do not take the gift. I had one abstention, and that leaves about 34 people who didn't respond.
Okay. And again, did you, you received no calls whatsoever on the format of the letter or why it was sent out?
No, there were no questions about why it was sent or, in fact, they were very happy, the town meeting members who called me, most of them, were just, put me down for yes, put me down for no. The ones that did have an opinion, you know, explained their opinion. I wasn't there to opine with them. I just listened, and that was it.
And Mr. Baker, did you receive any phone calls regarding this letter?
No, I have not.
Okay. Mr. Holstrom?
I will go, I have not received any phone calls. I received two emails. And that's all I've received throughout this whole thing. The letter did go out, I was made aware of the letter, and I says, this is going to be a great thing, give us some input from the town. It's not going to tell me what I'm going to do one way or another, but it gives me a sense of where people are thinking out there. And we haven't got all the information yet. That's why it hasn't come to the board yet for its vote. Again, there's, people have said here tonight that they've been receiving calls. I received two emails and no telephone calls. And I want to find out, where's all this information coming from and who's asking all these questions? Because my number is listed, I'm in the book, I'm in the, the website, and I'm not getting any information. So, this is a beneficial information session for me tonight.
Mr. Simoni?
Yeah, I'd just like, I'd just like to point out to the chair, in case you missed it, and maybe, you know, at some point, you'd like to caution Mr. Holstrom. During his comments, he advocated for board members acting as individuals rather than as a board. He said that he would be happy to solicit input individually. So, that's not a direction that I want this board to go in. And we've spoken about that several times.
I believe that's a misunderstanding.
Absolutely not. I would believe that Mr. Holstrom said he's received emails and always welcomes emails and input from residents, as we all do.
His first, his first set of comments before he said that, he advocated for soliciting input as individuals or as a board. We don't solicit input as individuals. We don't solicit anything as individuals. And also, I would like to also ask Mr. Holstrom through the chair, he stated that he was made aware of the letter. So, how were you made aware of the letter and no one else on the board was? Who did you have conversations with about this letter?
We don't need to do that. You declined to discuss who you, you received contact from, so I don't really think it's fair.
But this goes exactly to the point, that there are conversations going on. Some people were made aware of this letter, other people weren't.
If he, if he was asked a question by a town meeting member about the letter, that's...
No, no, no. His statement was, he was made aware that the letter went out. Why was he made aware and no one else was? That's what he said. Those were his exact words. He just sat here and said that. I was made aware the letter was going out.
I don't want to speak for Mr. Holstrom, but his, his wife is a town meeting member. I would, maybe she made him aware of the letter.
That's not what he said.
Mr. Hol, Mr. Simoni, I think you really have to stop twisting people's words. Did you have anything else on that?
I'm not twisting his words. That's exactly what he said. I was made aware this letter was going out. That's exactly what he said.
Now, you've just...
You guys can sit here and laugh, you can make a joke out of it all you want. You know what? The bottom line is...
I'm sorry, I believe, I'm going to step right in.
You just said, Mr. Simoni, that Mr. Holstrom was aware of the letter.
He said he was.
And then in your follow-up, you said, Mr. Holstrom was aware that this letter was going out.
He said he was made aware it was going out. Those were his exact words.
Okay.
So, you guys can think it's hilarious and continue to do what you do.
It's not hilarious, it's unfortunate.
You don't ever want anyone to interrupt you, and you do it to me all the time.
It's, it's unfortunate.
It is unfortunate. You're absolutely right. You got that right. And maybe that's why I get phone calls that you don't.
Mr. Cappenter, did you have something?
I would just, if there's nothing more, I would just...
Yep, I'm, I'm done. Let's move on.
I would just ask that we move on to the next agenda with our thanks to the moderator and the town clerk for, for coming, and wishing them a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holidays.
Merry Christmas to all, and to all a good night.
I just have one question. Do you want me to continue to take the numbers if they call? But at this point, it's...
It's the moderator's poll. If he, if he wants to continue and provide information to the board.
More information, the better.
But we're not directing you to, this isn't, this isn't a Board of Selectmen item, so we won't direct you as to how to proceed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good night.
Good night.
Next item we have is an update by the School Buildings Committee designee, Bob Grossman. Bob, you can come up to the desk if you'd like.
The board asked me to serve as their representative on the School Building Committee and to give periodic reports as to where we stand on the school. So, I would like to give you a brief summary of where we stand as of this past week. The project is 47 percent complete. It's on schedule. It's on, and it's also on budget. Approved changes to date for other projects are less than 1 percent of the contract value, which is extremely good. The remaining construction contingency is $1,031,031. The building's roof is tight, and all the windows are installed. And they were doing, last week, they were doing the outside caulking on the windows. The building is utilizing temporary heat and is tempered about to roughly 60 degrees. The classroom wing, they finished painting, or they're in process of finishing the painting of the classrooms. The ceramic tile is ongoing. This is the classroom wing. And the ceiling grid is being installed right now. The administrative wing, the drywall, is going up, and the prime painting will start very soon. The cafeteria, gym, and lobby, the metal stud framing is ongoing. The mechanical, electrical, and plumbing roofs are ongoing. And in the exterior facade, the metal panels are being installed. That's basically a summary of where we stand of the project. If I knew you had any questions, I, if I could answer them, I will.
Mr. Holstrom?
Yeah, just to go back, Bob, you said that the project is on budget. Is it under budget? Where are we with that?
Presently under.
Presently under budget. Okay.
But there's, you know, we're still only at 47 percent completion, so...
Okay.
But I feel that, it looks like at this point, and it's, you know, you don't have a magic wand, but you can tell, but...
Absolutely.
The, it looks like that we will come in under the budget amount.
Okay. Can I follow up with that as, knowing that, and hopefully that we can do that, I'd like to, for you, Madam Chair, to approach the town administration and find out what we can do about the fire tower, the fire training tower. There's been a lot of discussion. And is there any way that we can approach the School Buildings Committee to possibly utilize some of those funds for relocation? What I, I was out there today. The area that they're using now has been pretty much restricted because of the fencing that's up down there. They've actually made that project part of the, the middle school project, part of the training tower facility, because they have done some construction and done, you know, some various utilities work around there. And I would like to see possibly, if we could relocate that fire training tower to a location that would be away from the middle school and not have any concern or any problems down the road with any activities that may be at the training tower.
So...
Chairman, could I respond to that?
Yes, you may.
The MSBA allows, the figure that we have for the building of the school, the monies to be used only for that purpose. Unless there's some kind of exception to, to the rule, you can't use the monies for anything other than the school.
So, under the School Buildings Committee report, do any members have any objection to Mr. Holstrom's request of the town manager to look into the fire tower and the status of it? Mr. Simoni?
Yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Grossman 100 percent. We, we went to town meeting, we asked people to do an override, to borrow money for our school, and I don't think we should be using those funds to relocate a fire tower. I mean, there's, there's, there's monies allotted for, for things like that, and I don't see, I don't see how MSBA is going to be happy about that. I would, I would imagine the law wouldn't even allow it.
I, I guess I should have clarified my position or, or my statement. Do, do members have any objection with the town manager looking into relocation for funds that may be available? You know, if, if MSBA does not allow it, then certainly those funds wouldn't be used.
I, I don't have an objection to it, but I'll tell you right now, I won't support anything that costs the taxpayers an extra dime, because we knew the school was going in over there, we went through months and months of discussion on, on where the school was going to be built. If, we, we should have known over a year ago that, that if there was going to be an issue with the fire tower, it should have been addressed at that time. And, and we shouldn't be now looking for, for extra funds that are going to cost people additional monies. I mean, good Lord, we've borrowed enough as it is. And, you know, it's, I think it's time we curb our spending problem and stop looking for more ways to spend money.
Mr. Cappenter?
I do believe Norma Cod left money, and I do believe the chief had earmarked some of that money to move the tower at some point. So, I, I don't necessarily, I certainly don't object to seeing, I think it would be a benefit to the school not having buildings lit on fire, but maybe the kids would like it. I don't know. Maybe there's a science aspect to it. But I'm certainly in support of looking at that.
Certainly, the town manager can look into it and provide a report to us. Bob, how often is a School Buildings Committee meeting?
How often?
Yeah.
Every month.
Great. Well, thank you for representing us and bringing us the updated report.
You have, you want to talk to me?
Yeah. Um, I can't believe I can't remember. You, you were on the last tour, right?
On the last...
The last tour that we did of the school, just a couple months?
Yes.
Okay, I, I thought it was a... So, how much, how much more?
I don't recall what the percentage was at that time.
That's fine.
I don't even know if they told us really when we took the tour.
I think when we went on the second, when everything was enclosed at that point, and now, and they were starting to do...
No, they were starting to work inside, but not finished work.
Yeah, right.
It wasn't tight yet.
Okay, thanks. That's fine. I, I didn't know if you knew. That's all right.
I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy Hanukkah, and also a healthy and happy New Year.
Same to you, Bob.
Thanks to you, Bob. Thanks so much for the update. We have people waiting. I'll entertain a motion to move up Board of Selectmen, item 5A, a one-day beer and wine license.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? And I will just point out that in your packet, in the hard copy packet, there is an updated report from the DCG. The blue letterhead that was not included in the email agenda file. So, this is an updated report from DCG. Good evening.
My name is Maureen Kennedy, and I'm here representing Auburn Youth and Family Services. And we have applied for a wine and beer license for our annual Dancing with the Stars, which is January 31st.
So, in your packet, go ahead, Mr. Simoni.
You, you were here last year for this, correct?
Yes.
And I think, I think everything pretty much looks the same, and everyone's aware, this is, how many years now?
This'll be our sixth year.
Six. So, the conditions that are on here, everyone's aware of, the crowd control, all of the things that...
We do, yes.
And it's the same venue as last year, correct?
Yes, exactly.
So...
In the past, you've asked me who the dancers are. If you'd liked a little information, I'll tell you.
As long as you're not giving up any, you know, close to the vest information, that's not supposed, that's fine.
Your name is not on it, Steve.
So, we'll just...
I would hope someone would have let me know if it was.
We'll, we'll just finish up with the questions on this, and then we're happy to have you talk about the, the event and its participants. Is it Mr. Lynch who seeks certified crowd manager?
John Lynch is, yes.
Right, okay, that's what I remembered from last year. And the drawing is the same setup as last year? And how many years has it been at Motorsports?
This'll be our third year.
Third year, okay. Same, same setup with alcohol?
Yes.
Okay. And this, this updated report from the DCG just went out to Sally today.
Yes, I do have a copy.
You have a copy, great. Okay, did you have a chance to read it?
I did.
Okay. All right, well, if there are no further questions or comments on the application, I'll entertain a motion, and then we'll let you talk about the dance. Is there a motion?
I do have one thing, Chairman. We're wondering if you would waive our fee. We're a nonprofit.
Okay, that, we'll, we'll take the fir, that is the second vote. Okay, that, we'll, we'll take the fir, that is the second vote. Is there a motion regarding the license request?
Motion to approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town in any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all of the conditions shall invalidate the license, render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license. Do we need the date of the event in the motion?
No, because they have a.
Okay.
A, um.
January thirty-first.
And do you have a snow date?
Two.
Yes, we do.
That's fine then. The motion as read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Now, we'll have to hear about, oh, wait a minute, let me, is there a motion regarding the fee?
I'd make a motion that we waive the fee.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thanks. Now, let, tell us about the Stars.
Well, last year, we did an alumni dance where it was our fifth anniversary, and it was so successful, we're going to do it again. So many of the alumni came back and danced. It was great. This year, we have quite a few businessmen in town. We have Nate Adello from Midstate. We have Mike Hammond, who's the president of the Pacoana Football. We have Rich Gudrow from Thrifty Car. We have attorney Alicia O'Connell. We have Jeff Labonte from Auburn Daily. We have Jess Harrington, our new school committee woman. We have Pat Dufour, who is a teacher at the high school and a football coach. We have Officer John, George Vanos from the Auburn Police Department. We have the assistant fire chief, Glenn Anderson, is dancing. And then we have the Reverend David Hall from St. Thomas Episcopal Church. And I'll give you a little secret. Our theme this year is Hello to Hollywood, and Reverend Hall and his partner are doing Sister Act, so it should be a fun night. So please come. It always sells out, and it's a great fun night, great fundraiser for Auburn Youth and Family.
Great. Thanks so much.
Is, is there, is there a date that the tickets are available up until, so people know when they have to get them by?
They will go on right after the first of the year. They'll go up on the sale, and they do sell out.
And as soon as they're gone?
Gone, they're gone, yep.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
You too. Thank you. And is there a motion to move up gift excite, gift acceptance C four first, and then while we're moving them up, gift acceptance C two and three?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. So the first one we have is the library. Yes, please. Go ahead. So we, so we have, yeah, because we're going to move up another item for the library as well.
Oh, thank you.
So we have, we have from, to the library, and the value of goods from Thai Beanie Babies, approximate value nine thousand dollars, and equipment, a computer with an approximate market value of thirty-five hundred dollars, and the computer. If you want to tell us a little bit about these Beanie Babies and how they, how that came about?
Thai Beanie Babies, as you know, makes Beanie Babies, and for a number of years, they have been giving libraries and other nonprofit organizations the Beanie Babies so that they can promote programs within their organization. Libraries get the Beanie Babies and kind of has a reward for young people reading or doing an activity, getting good grades, whatever the library has deemed what they want to do with the Beanie Babies, they do with them. So Beanie Babies was gracious enough to offer us twenty-five hundred Beanie Babies, which will hopefully bring our spring reading program and our summer reading program give great incentives to have young people get together and read.
Great. And are there any questions on the computer or copier? So we have to the library, and the amount of approximate value of nine thousand dollars for the Beanie Babies, a computer for thirty-five hundred dollars, and a copier for four, forty-five hundred dollars. Is there a motion to accept?
Motion that we accept with gratitude.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. And also, if we could move up town.
That's awesome. That is awesome.
Okay. And while, while you're here, so we don't keep you waiting, if we can move up town manager items C, D, E, F.
C.
And G.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. So we have, we have five grants. Here.
Start with the top?
Yes, please.
The Mass Board of Library Commissioners every year has what's called LSTA grants. Both of these grants, number C and D, are LSTA grants. They've allowed me to apply for both of them. Usually, they only offer letters of intent for single libraries to get a single grant. They know that we still have a need to fix our young adult materials in the library, and they also know that our library has been designated the Central Mass Library for Adaptive Equipment and Adaptive Technology. So one of the grants is for five thousand dollars worth of young adult reading materials, and DVDs, audios, that kind of thing, and one of them would be for five thousand dollars of additional adaptive equipment.
Great.
And that's C and D.
Okay. Why don't we take action on those? Are there any questions on those? Any comments? So we're on item C, the letter of intent for Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, Library Services Technology Assistance Grants, and the amount of five thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we vote to authorize the filing and acceptance of grant funds for adaptive technology.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Under D, we have a library grant, a letter of intent for Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, Library Services Technology Grant, the same as the above, and the amount of five thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
I vote to authorize the filing and acceptance of grant funds for young adult materials.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. So next, we have a letter of intent for American Library Association Young Adult Library Service Association Grant, item E.
This grant, we have, I've submitted a letter of intent. We're in the final round of choosing. We are up against two library systems, which means we're kind of the underdog at this point in time, but at least we're still the top three. It's for ten thousand dollars of learning how to work the new technology equipment, and then a twenty-five thousand dollar 3D printer for the library. It would be really awesome if we could get it, but again, we're running against two library systems that have, you know, multimillion-dollar budgets compared to ours. But it's at least great to be in the top.
And when do you expect to hear on that one?
The end of January, we don't know.
End of January. Are there any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Move to authorize the filing and acceptance of grant funds for ten thousand dollars in training funds and twenty-five thousand dollars in technology equipment, a 3D printer.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. And finally, we have the Ezra Jack Keats Grant, and the amount of five hundred dollars.
Ezra Jack Keats is a, was a children's author, and his foundation still gives grants out to public libraries across the country each year. Each library and library system is allowed to apply for one grant. They give thirty-five out, and we received a five hundred dollar one for children's programming. So it would be a six-week program based on his books.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I move that we to authorize and accept funds for children's programs.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. And you did have one more to, you've already.
Which is actually two more.
Okay.
We got the Auburn Cult Cultural Council. I applied for two grants, one, a three hundred dollar one, which is for our Growing a Rainbow, which is our butterfly garden for our library. It would be children's programming and an adult programming to actually garden and create a butterfly garden at the library. We kind of started the foundation last year and kind of ran out of money, so now we, we've asked them for a three hundred dollar grant, which we have received from them, and a five hundred dollar Magical Moments, which is a six-week program for teens. The first week, the magician will come and do a magic show and show the teens how to do the magic. The second week is to show them how to create and present a flea circus. The third week is to show them how to do balloon animals and balloon creatures and whatnot. The fourth week, the kids practice all what they have learned. The fifth week, they do a, a presentation for themselves, and the sixth week, they put a program on for the general public.
Great.
If there are no comments or questions, is there a motion?
Do we need a separate motion, or it's the same motion?
I mean, it's, it's in, I don't believe we need a separate motion.
Okay.
It's from the Auburn Cultural Council.
I move to authorize and accept grant funds for three hundred dollars, Growing a Rainbow, Butterfly Garden, and five hundred dollars Magical Moments.
Second.
From the Auburn Cultural Council.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thanks so much for coming in.
And I just have one more thing to let you all know. We were chosen, our library, to represent the Central Mass Library System for our legislative breakfast, and that will take place March thirteenth at eight o'clock. So that's kind of like a save the date, and you'll get more information later on in it.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Have a great holiday.
You also.
Through the chair, if I may, too. I just want to say a special thanks to the Library Board of Trustees and Carol Anne as the director. They've really done a great job seeking out these grants for these programs. They've been very aggressive with it, and hopefully we'll, we'll be able to secure some of these in the coming months, but they do, they're working together beautifully.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mary.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to move up agenda item six? Aye.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Through the chair, if I may ask Darlene Coyle, who's the acting director of the Department of Development and Inspection Services and Director of Public Health, to come up and speak to this grant. Again, want to thank Darlene and the office for going after, aggressively going after these grants.
Good evening. Good evening. So the, the grant that is before, before you tonight is a grant that we applied for through Region Two Public Health Emergency Coalition. It is a coalition of health boards that meet on a regular basis. We belong to the Region Two Public Health Coalition. The purpose of the group is to find ways to utilize funding that is received from the government to be able to better prepare our town in the event that there was an emergency to happen. I think you're probably very well aware of the emergency dispensing site at the high school, Auburn High School. For years, we have identified different buildings in town that we would utilize in the event of emergency. I know that there has been some occasion to actually utilize those buildings, and Auburn has always been ahead of the, ahead of the curve as far as trying to stay prepared for all hazards. Our emergency group from the town departments meets on a regular basis, and we have a very active CERT team, as you know. So this, this grant was for one thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents to purchase two iPads to support the health department's activities in this venue. And I would respectfully ask that you accept this grant so we can move forward in purchasing that.
Great, thank you. Mr. Holstrom?
Through the chair, to the town manager, wasn't, there was one on, item on our agenda from the emergency management director, too. Didn't we receive some iPads from him also?
Through the chair, that's correct. Mr. Holstrom, we've received two, what they call HMEP grants from MEMA, and we received one FY thirteen slash fourteen, and the amount of one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to purchase two iPads. We, so that was, I believe we applied for that back in March or April, and we received that and purchased the iPads for the local emergency management planning specific to hazmat material collection and inventory. The second round of HMEP grants was on your agenda two weeks ago, and actually, I just received the grant documents today. So we did submit that application last week by the deadline, and I think it was on your agenda two weeks ago. We submitted the grant application, and it was to purchase an additional two iPads. So it's a little bit different. They're, they're all for emergency preparedness, but the specific ones that already came before you was in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars for two iPads, and that was specific to hazmat. So police chief, fire chief, in the course of participating in the local emergency management committee, and having to have access, particularly in the field, if there is a hazmat incident, and unfortunately, with the number of highways we have, it does happen, need to have those iPads. So we did get, approval for that came in this afternoon. We'll be executing the grant documents this week. Similar to this in, in the ultimate use of it, but a different source of grant funds.
Great. I would just like to make a comment that between divisional services and the emergency services, this town is well-versed in, you know, our programs to keep our residents safe and keep them aware of what's going on, and as a past emergency management director, it's been nothing but improved relationships between all the departments, and I think it's a great thing for this town to go forward. And I would applaud your efforts for all these grants, because this is helping us, and the town is benefiting by all these grants that you've put your work into, and I would wholeheartedly support this program.
Thank you, sir. It is a team effort. I mean, we have a lot of very dedicated people, so, thank you.
If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we authorize and accept Region Two Public Health Emergency Preparedness, the PHEP grant for one thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
And have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Do you have something?
Yes, if I may. I just wanted to, the holiday is coming quick at the end of the week. I just wanted to let you know that as, as in years past, we're going to do the holiday tree drop-off over at the DPW Leaf Pile Yard. So that is going to start the day after Christmas, December twenty-sixth. It's going to go until Sunday, January fourth, and the hours of operation at Five Milbury Street are going to be Monday through Friday, eight AM to one PM, and Saturdays and Sundays, nine AM to three PM. I have this information posted on the town website. We also sent it over to Cable Access today, and we will also be sending this out through the social media account just right before the holiday, just to remind everybody. So I just wanted to let you know, the, the residents that have already purchased a sticker, so there's no additional fee. If you have a sticker, you can drop off your tree. If you don't have a sticker, if you hadn't had a need for one, there's just a small fee of five dollars.
Great.
So that, that information, again, is out there.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
You too.
So we are going to go back to our agenda items in order now, since there's no one else waiting. Under Communications, we have a letter from the Massachusetts State Lottery Commission that the Edgema Food Store at one forty-three Oxford Street North has applied for a keynote-to-go license. The only action that would be taken by this board is if we have an objection to this license. If there's no objection, I'll move on. We are back under Board of Selectment Items. In your packet, you have the remaining list of the annual license renewals. Included is a list of the annual license renewals. They were sent to the Department of Development and Department and Treasurer Collector's Office for Review. There have been no issues identified. And there are nine licenses here. And with the exception of a few drain layers licenses, which aren't necessarily renewed annually, I believe that this is the entire list. Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion that we renew the licenses as submitted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. We can also take a conditional vote to approve any additional licenses that we may have overlooked, as long as they have no outstanding issues, and that they come in before December thirty-one. Any outstanding licenses that do not come in before December thirty-one will be treated per the board's policy as a new license, and they would need to come before the board. So I'll entertain a motion to approve any additional license renewal applications that come in before December thirty-one and have no outstanding issues.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. We're back under gift acceptance, and from the, to the fire department from Celia Corporation, and the amount of one hundred dollars to the fire department gift account.
Make a motion that we accept with gratitude.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. And a gift from Gordon Holstrom to the Department of Public Works, approximate value of three hundred dollars for a six hundred linear foot utility holes.
Make a motion to accept. Yep, go ahead. I will second it.
Is there a second?
I will second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. To the town manager, and the amount of two hundred dollars for the Worcester Administration Offices Association for the Animal Auburn Shelter in memory of Matt Jacobson.
Motion second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. And finally, to the police department gift account, to be determined, a gift from McDonald's in the amount of one hundred dollars. in the amount of $100.
Motion second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Completes Town Manager Items, we have no proclamations, we're back under Town Manager Items and the first one is an update and you have a report in your packet, an update on the status timeline and process for the bylaw review process.
Great, through the chair, I'll just, for purposes of the public seeing this, this will be available online too, once we post everything, we'll make sure it's available to people. We've been working, as you know, for probably two and a half years between the Bylaw Review Committee, which is chaired by Lieutenant Mark Mass, and Town Council as well as the Town Moderator to bring this project to the point that it is at now. It's been a complete review of every single administrative bylaw that the town has. The department heads and division heads have weighed in and given their recommendations for either revisions, new or changing of bylaws based on changes to Mass General Law, changes to the Town Charter, changes to the organizational structure of the town to try to make the bylaws complement and follow along in parallel state law and local charter. The Bylaw Committee has done yeoman's work on this project, it's been massive, I know a couple of you have been to those meetings and I know the committee is grateful that you've attended. Again, it's a very long process and there's still many steps to go and that's what you have here in your packet. So, just so everybody knows, the Bylaw Review Committee was sent a final draft and the final draft is for their review to see if they are ready with that draft to go and have a couple of public hearings that we'd like to hold in January and February. So, the intent is that they would review the bylaw draft which has now been reviewed by Town Council and the Town Moderator for Language and all of the department heads have signed off on the changes as being accurate to what they've submitted. The Bylaw Review Committee, it's my understanding they've called for a meeting on January 5th and at that point they would be reviewing the draft bylaws. Once they review them, if they make any changes to them, Town Council would incorporate those changes into the draft and we would then send it to the Board of Selectmen. If they don't make any changes to that draft, then we will send the draft out to you immediately. But as soon as we have the changes incorporated, you will get that draft as well and that would be the draft as approved by the committee. We intend to hold a public hearing at the high school the week of the 26th through 29th of January. We would hold a second one, again, at the high school, we want to make sure the public's invited, the boards and commissions are invited, town meeting members are invited, just to have the opportunity to ask questions.
Mr. Holstrom.
One question, I didn't want to interrupt, but with the whole public hearings on these draft bylaws, how do the residents, how does the public get a hold of a draft of these bylaws so that they can review them and ask those questions?
Yeah, thank you, through the chair, I should have read this note here under January 6th. On January 6th, at the same time we notify the Board of Selectmen, we would post it on our website and through social media, so the draft bylaws will be available to everybody on the website.
Will there be hard copies available?
There will be some, there will be some at the public hearings, it's probably over 200 pages, so we were trying to do as much as we could electronically, but if somebody would like to see copies, we will have some of them available, obviously for people to look at.
Thank you.
So, we will get that out, again, we will post it as soon as the Bylaw Review Committee approves of the draft and any changes that go out. And then approximately three weeks later would be the first hearing and then four weeks later would be the second hearing. After those hearings, if there are any revisions to be made based on the input from the public, the Bylaw Review Committee would review and accept any new revisions that Town Council would incorporate into it. We expect that that will probably happen the third week of February. And then, it is recommended, and one of the reasons we wanted to bring this to you tonight is we've backed into all of these dates, we've always talked about having a special town meeting just for this because this is a complicated issue. We would suggest that the Board of Selectmen vote to have the special town meeting on March 24th and the board would open the warrant on February 23rd if that was the case and then could close it at any point you want, we were suggesting to close it on March 2nd. We would then email the revised draft that at that point would have been approved once again by the Bylaw Review Committee, send it back to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee and we are recommending that we hold a joint meeting of the BOS and the Finance Committee to be moderated if you'd like it to be, just so that we can get support from either the Finance Committee and/or Board of Selectmen prior to going to the special town meeting. That would give you the opportunity, hopefully the board members, anyone who's interested in asking questions will come to the public hearings prior to that because there will be several of them. And as you know, Madam Chair, there have been quite a few meetings and I know you've attended as well as Mr. Holstrom has attended when they were held a while ago. Again, we're inviting the board to attend these public hearings and then hopefully when we have the joint meeting, the questions will have already been asked, you've already seen the draft and hopefully you could, at that point, give your support, you know, for or against the draft bylaws as a whole. Then, we would mail the warrant out on March 10th and then hold the special town meeting on March 24th. As we know from recent town meeting, we then have to wait eight days because you can't count Sundays, so it's seven days, not including Sunday, for the vote of town meeting to then be certified. Once it's certified, the bylaws as approved by town meeting would be sent to the Attorney General's Office for Review. I couldn't tell you how long that takes, it may take several months to do that, but that is the schedule that we're on as far as getting the draft bylaws from here down to the state. So, at this point, there are no votes that are required, we just wanted to give you as much of a heads up as we can as to the schedule of this and we'll make sure that you get them as follows. The special town meeting, again, we backed into that date based on how much timeframe we needed for all these committees and boards and commissions and the public to actually go through and make all the revisions and hold appropriate public hearings.
Thank you. Other questions or something?
Just a suggestion or two, in that we're in winter, we should probably, not us, but the Bylaw Review Committee should try and put out ahead of time, snow dates. And, as we know, March is also still a snowy month, we might want to, as a board, get more than one date, not just the 24th if that's the date that we pick, so that we know if something happens, we can tell town meeting members in that first email that goes out by the town clerk or the mailing, so they know if it's canceled for whatever reason, they'll have a night.
Great, great suggestion.
Thank you.
Anything else on that item? Seeing none, the next item is a discussion and vote on a proposed zoning bylaw amendment regarding the appointment of associate members to the Zoning Board of Appeals per Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5.
Through the chair, thank you. This item is a follow-up to an issue that we had identified about a month or so ago related to the Zoning Board of Appeals. The question had come before Town Administration and the Town Clerk as to whether an associate member, which is referred to as an alternate in often cases, legally it's usually called an associate member, could serve as a vice chair of the ZVA. That led into further research from the Town Clerk, the Town Council and myself as to what were the bylaws, what was the state law, could that happen? And through that research, it was determined that under Mass General Law, in order for the Board of Selectmen to appoint associate members to the ZVA, under Chapter 40A, Section 12, the, I'm sorry, 40A, Section 14, the Board of Selectmen can indeed appoint alternates if there is a bylaw that exists for so doing. There is no bylaw that we have been able to find, we've gone back to 1949 to see if there was anything on the record that showed that and that is, as long as we have been appointing through the Board of Selectmen, alternates or associates. So, based on the recommendation of Town Council, his advice to the Chairman of the ZVA, which I relayed to him, was to have, right now, the two alternates that this board has appointed to the ZVA withhold from participation, discussion or vote on any item to come before the ZVA until this issue gets resolved. The way it gets resolved, it's a little bit different process than what we just went through for the bylaw review process because those are administrative bylaws, this is a zoning bylaw. So, as a zoning bylaw, it has to follow a slightly different process. So, I did outline that process here, but just to, basically just to summarize it, because it's rather lengthy, the, someone needs to propose the amendment, so, because I was aware of it, I'm coming for you tonight with a proposed amendment, which you can see in green lettering would be the change to the current zoning bylaw that Town Council Hennington has proposed. Under that, the, under Chapter 40A, Section 5, the Board of Selectmen through this process has 14 days to submit this proposed amendment to the Planning Board. Under the law, the Planning Board then has 65 days to hold a public hearing and act on the submission and there are other notice requirements in general law too that are specific to the Planning Board. The Planning Board is also required to report its recommendation to town meeting within 21 days as of the close of the public hearing. So, similar to what we just did with the administrative bylaws, we then backed all of this process into that March 24th proposed date for the special town meeting and to Mr. Carpenter's point, and we'll make that clear, we were also saying if it's not the 24th, let's have the 25th or the 26th of that week. So, if you back everything into it, if the board takes a vote tonight to accept this proposed amendment, then you, our recommendation would be, while you have 14 days to submit it to the Planning Board, given holidays, given deadlines, we would recommend that you actually submit that on December 29th. And that would give the Planning Board 65 days to hold a public hearing, which would bring us to March 4th, so up until March 4th they can hold a public hearing. Then, they're required to report within 21 days, which would be March 25th. So, and that's assuming they have the hearing on March 4th. We can bump that up as well if you wanted to, we figured out that you could do it right up until probably January 4th and still give the Planning Board enough time to do what they have to do. So, sometime between the 29th and January 4th, timing wise would work out well and that will allow them to get a recommendation to town meeting either well in advance or even that evening. So, I don't know if you want to go through, there are, we're actually proposing two sections to the current bylaw. One is to add a Section 9.1.3, which states, "In addition to the members established by the Town Charter, the Board of Appeals may include two associate members appointed by the Board of Selectmen, one or both of whom may be designated from time to time by the Chairman of the Board of Appeals to sit on the board in case of absence, inability to act or conflict of interest on the part of any member thereof, or in the event of a vacancy on the board until such vacancy is filled." And I just want to make a note that that is specific language from Mass General Law as to when a Chairman of the Board may appoint an alternate to participate. So, that's specific from Mass General Law. And then, also propose a Section 9.1.4, which says, "The term of each associate member shall be determined by the Board of Selectmen." The reason that language was put that way is because under the law, there should be, a member's term should expire every year, so depending on when you appoint, Town Council recommended not putting the specific term in here in case you're filling a term midterm, someone resigns or moves out of town.
So, since you mentioned it and I'm not sure how we will move forward with it, but something we'll have to look at is the current appointments of the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Zoning Board of Appeals is supposed to be appointed similar to that of the Planning Board, where they were appointed for a five-year term, one member each year, not the two-two and one.
They had a five-year term.
Right, because it's a one-year.
I believe you can still have a three-year, but it has to be, as you said, similar to the Planning Board where you always have someone.
Planning's three now, that was changed in the Charter.
So, to the Chair's point, we just had, and this is the reason that Town Council didn't want to specify the dates, because as you mentioned, they need to have one member expire every term. Right now, technically, it is staggered, but it should be staggered in a different manner, which you would look at when you make your appointments next spring.
Okay. So, are there any questions on the proposed bylaw or the action needed to be taken to move forward? Mr. Holstrom.
One comment, I just want to say thank you for following along and your due diligence on this because there has been some question arisen in the past and thank you for following along with this and just fine tuning this so that we do have a bylaw to go by. Thank you.
You're very welcome. And so, just to clarify, you did say that the Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals has been made aware of any participation or votes by the alternates?
Yes, through the chair, I have spoken to him and following this evening's discussion of the Board of Selectmen, we can reach out and make sure that he's aware of the process that is now underway. It would just be, I want to make sure he knows as a courtesy, the Board of Appeals don't have to take any action, it's a Board of Selectmen and Town Meeting and Planning Board issue when it comes to amending a zoning bylaw.
If there's nothing else, is there a motion?
I would accept a proposed zoning bylaw amendment regarding the appointment of associate members to the Zoning Board of Appeals from Mass General Law's Chapter 40A, Section 5.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted?
Madam Chair, if I can just ask a follow-up question which is somewhat related?
Yes.
The Planning Board is also to appoint alternate members and you were on the Charter Review Commission when we tried to get alternates and it was a difficult thing because at the time the Planning Board was elected, I'd like to see if the Planning Board, the current Planning Board has any interest in having a similar process because I do know that they've had some lengthy illnesses and just in the general course of things, people's schedules kind of make it hard to keep the voting together. So, it would be helpful if the Planning Board, if they so chose, wanted to now add alternate members as well.
That's a Town Manager item, so you can look into that.
Through the chair, I can look into that. Your next meeting is January 12th, so given the timelines of the process, I think you wouldn't make it for this particular special town meeting, but you could potentially make it for the annual town meeting, correct? So, we can look into that and see.
They may not be interested, I just would like to give them the opportunity to weigh in, it might be helpful to them, it may not be something they're interested in and why not? I think it's a good, it's a good thing to have, extra people.
Are you all set, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, moving on, we've taken care of Town Manager Item C, D, E, F, G, we are up to H. The Recreation Auburn Cultural Council Grant, vote to authorize and accept funds in the amount of $1,000, the funds will be used for the 2015 Summer Nights at the Movies program.
Through the chair, the Auburn Cultural Council, as you can tell, this is their annual grant making season and we were fortunate to receive two grants for the library and this is a third grant that the town received that Kristen Pappas had applied for as a Director of Recreation and Culture to provide funding to support the, this coming summer's 2015 Summer Nights at the Movie Program that we launched last summer. It was a great night, people loved it, the children loved it and this gives us the funding to move forward with that.
So, Mr. Holstrom.
Just a comment, throughout the course of the year, we've had been approached by several departments as well as the Town Manager and the Administration on grants that the town has benefited by greatly and at no cost to the residents that we've been able to give them beneficial programs and additional activities that is at no cost to them. I would like to say thank you very much to all involved with all of the grant writing, grant writing is no easy thing, approached at once and I, there's somebody else to do, but it is a very, very difficult thing, but we have benefited by it greatly and I just want to say thank you to all who take part in that because the town has benefited by it.
Great. So, is there a motion to authorize and accept the funds of $1,000 for the Auburn Cultural Council Grant? Mr. Smolian?
Yeah, I just have a question. It says here in this letter, I think, this is from the Cultural Council, "According to the IRS guidelines, the grant money you receive is considered taxable income, keep the award letter and check stub as a record of the award for your taxes." How is that handled, is that part of the town's budget? How do we account for that taxable income?
Right, through the chair, for the town, we fall under tax exempt status, so when it comes time to do that, we have our tax exempt number that is submitted. I believe this is a fairly standard letter that they send, they don't- I believe this is a fairly standard letter that they send, they don't just give grants to not-for-profits.
Anything else, Mr. Smillan? Is there a motion?
I move to authorize and accept grant funds for three, I'm sorry, reading the wrong one. Still authorizing and accepting funds of $1,000 for the 2015 Summer Nights at the Movies program. From the Auburn Cultural Council.
We have a second for Mr. Holstrom, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. We have no tabled items.
I don't think we didn't have so many that were similar.
Under board of selectmen member items, Mr. Carpenter, a request to send a letter to the Auburn Fuel Fundraiser at Peck Jugg Golf Course per the contract. Mr. Carpenter?
Yeah, for many years, as everyone knows, I think it started in 1979 or 1980 during the fuel crises, or as a result of the fuel crises that specifically the Northeast went through. For heating oil during those years, former selectman George Jewell and Lorraine Nargren created this fund, and every year they would have a golf tournament to raise funds. For the last several years, the Auburn Fuel Fund has not held this, which is unfortunate because there's, there's a great need for it. So my reason for bringing this up is if the organization is not planning to do this, I would like to see the board pursue a change in the language of the contract so that one of our local charities, whomever that may be, I would recommend a lottery system, even if this is the last time it's ever done, because this is a contract that precedes the latest ethics change, this would give a boost to a local charity, and I'd really like to see us utilize it, this is giving the current holder of the contract an extra day of income that he is not entitled to. So I would like to see us be proactive, and I would ask the board's support to send a letter and see where that takes us.
So the letter is to ask the Auburn Fuel Fund if they have intentions of utilizing the event? And wait to hear from a response, because I'm just thinking if, if it's the last year of the contract, and it is in the contract, they may be willing to work with someone else to still have it under their name. So we may want to include language like that in the letter.
Absolutely.
Are there any questions or comments?
Through the chair, if I may, just to add to that, if the board decides to do that, I just want to be, let everyone know, we would then have to negotiate that change into the contract, we just can't put it in there, it would have to be agreed upon by the town, as well as by the Johnson Golf Management.
So I guess my point was, if, if the Auburn Fuel Fund was willing to work with another agency and still have the event, you know, under the umbrella of the Auburn Fuel Fund, I can't imagine that there would be an issue.
There shouldn't be an issue with that, correct.
So it would be getting the Auburn Fuel Fund to act as host, working with someone else, and that would be up to that moment.
Okay.
So this is, this is an active charity that has not really done anything?
It has not been active in the last couple of years, as far as I'm aware, they have no funds currently.
I mean, they still accept donations.
Right.
This, this is the Auburn Fuel Fund that operated out of the town clerk's office for many years until the recent changes with ethics, and now the Auburn Fuel Fund, you know, is managed through Auburn Youth and Family Services. So there are, there are right now two fuel funds that I'm aware of that operate in town, but the Auburn Fuel Fund is the longstanding fuel fund that, you know, was operated out of the town clerk's office, that if people had a need, there wasn't that prolonged process, you know, which, which is not a bad thing today. They just, you know, designated a need and they used it, so we, so it was incorporated into the contract at the golf course, but the Auburn Fuel Fund in their, I guess, board of directors, you know, some who I'm aware of with health issues weren't able to operate the fuel, you know, the, the golf tournament, whatever, I don't know what you call it, golf tournament?
It is a golf tournament, yes.
Yes, so it hasn't happened, and it is in the, the contract with Johnson Golf. Mr. Smillan?
I understand that, I understand the reason for the change, for it not to be out of, out of the clerk's office, so just a question, the fact that it's not done out of the clerk's office, there's no conflict there with a charity? Were they, were they using essentially, I mean, the golf course technically is, belongs to the town? So is there a conflict there, or is there special permits that would have to be?
It's in, it's in the contract.
Okay, so there, so the contract didn't change even though it moved out from, off from under the clerk's office, is that?
Right.
So you're requesting the change be, reflect the fact that no longer?
Well, I, if they're able to do it, that's, that's great. If, if they're not, I just want to make it clear that I don't want them designating the charity. I think it should be a lottery, and whomever the, the local charity is, I mean, obviously it's up to the board.
I appreciate, I just wanted to understand exactly what it was that you were, so thank you.
So that's.
So the request, I guess, would be to send a letter to the Auburn Fuel Fund and indicate an, an interest in understanding where they're at, what their position is in regards to the designation in the contract for the tournament.
Yeah, I would be, I would just say, do you plan to utilize the day that's designated in the contract?
Okay.
It, it has lapsed for whatever reason.
Do you want to make that in the form of a motion?
That would be my motion, and that we include in the language of the letter that if they would be inclined, if they themselves can't use it, but would like to partner with another charity through a potential lottery program set up by the town, we would welcome that as well, their participation, and thanks for all that they've done.
And second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. We've taken care of item 8B. Just briefly, on the December 29th meeting, we have no scheduled hearings, we have no agenda items, it would be too late to, to advertise for a hearing at this point, so there's really no reason for the board of selectmen to meet for December 29th. We've taken care of all licenses, year-end licenses, so we will not be holding the, you know, the fifth meeting. Do we, is that?
It's only.
It's only an option, right? It's not second for us, so we don't need a vote to take it, but we will not be meeting on December 29th. Is there any additional public comment? We have the minutes of August 25th, 2014. If there's no corrections or omissions, the chair will accept them as written. And I just want to say that, that Mrs. Brotherton was absent tonight, she sends her very best to everyone for the holidays as well. She had some recent medical issues, but is here in spirit with us, and I also want to wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, whatever holiday you celebrate, and a very Happy New Year. Motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, we are adjourned.
Thank you, and good night.